All right, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. This meeting will be held in accordance with Executive Order N 29-20 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code Section 54950, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the application Zoom. Needing information and call-in information was posted on the agenda and on the city's website. Remote public comment is also available by emailing thecityclerk@cityclerk@ci.series.ca.us. The city clerk will read your comment into the record during the public comment period. So at this time, again, welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 26th, 2020. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember Dorosse.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Vieira.
Here. Thank you. Next, we'll move to the invocation by Pastor Tim Gianosa, is it, I believe?
It is.
Big Valley Grace, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
It is. Well, thank you again for allowing me to be with you. And thank you for everything you're doing, especially during a very difficult time. Let me read a couple passages to you from Proverbs. Proverbs 3:15 says, "Wisdom is more precious than rubies; nothing you desire can compare with her." Proverbs 4:8 says this, "If you prize wisdom, she will make you great; embrace her, and she will honor you." And then finally, James 1:5 says this, "If you need wisdom, ask our generous God, and he will give it to you. He will not rebuke you for asking." So again, thank you for all that you guys do. And I know that you stand, you stand kind of on that cliff, looking out over our city, looking out over our future. And you have to make a lot of decisions, a lot of choices, and you have a lot of wisdom. And so thank you for using it and using it for the good of our community and for our future. Please allow me to pray. Father, thank you. Thank you for these men and women who sacrifice a lot to be here, who give of themselves in a myriad of ways. Father, whose families sacrificed that they could offer leadership and counsel and guidance to the people of Series. And so we thank you. Lord, we ask you that you give them wisdom, wisdom that is even beyond their knowledge and experience, and wisdom that is unique and special, wisdom that foresees things, wisdom that can stand on top of that hill, that mount, and see what's ahead and see the obstacles and see the rewards and see that which is in our future. And that they'll make choices and decisions that will benefit and flourish and that will help the citizens of Series. And so, Lord, we thank you that you've assembled them to make those choices and to make those good decisions and to make those wise, wise decisions, Father. And so bless them as they go throughout this evening, as they evaluate the things they have in front of them. And Father, may they constantly have in mind the betterment of their brother or their sister, and may they constantly persevere in seeking that which is best and good and right. And so, Father, be with them. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pastor? Next, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move to citizens' communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Public comments will be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand on the little icon and request to speak. If you are participating by telephone, please press nine, excuse me, star nine on your phone. The city clerk will call your name in the order the request are received. When it's time for you to speak, the city clerk will unmute your microphone. City clerk will provide the name of each of the person that was requested, that has requested to speak. After the comments, I will ask the clerk if we've received any comments through email, and we will go through those. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please either click on the raise hand button on the lower right-hand side or by calling in and pressing star nine.
Ken Yakeley has his hand raised, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Yakeley, I will unmute your mic. Your mic is now unmuted.
Yes, I'd like to address the city council, the police department, city manager, just about everybody there on the picture there. This last week and this last weekend, I had some problems in my neighborhood. These names aren't in particular order, but I'll mention them anyway. That helped me with my problem. Vice Mayor Rhino, Councilmember Condit, Tom Westbrook. And I sent, I think, a phone call request to Captain Crane. Anyway, the problem is still existing in my neighborhood. And some of you probably know already that I have a health issue with anxiety and stuff. And I was diagnosed with that several years back, although I didn't know I had it. And it's very, it can make you very ill with a lot of noise that goes on from a neighbor. This particular last weekend was a dog been barking for several weeks. I was giving them the benefit of the doubt, which I shouldn't do at all. I even bought a dog collar for him that sends off the signal, but they wouldn't answer the door. So I was desperate because I was getting very ill. And so I wrote a letter to Tom Westbrook and Councilmember Condit and Linda Rhino. And Tom Westbrook wrote back to me and eventually told me to call the police again. They'd been out to this dog disturbance call twice. The first time, you know, they didn't even get out of the car and dispatch. The second time, what do you want me to do? And I said, I want you to get the officer to call me. The night before, the officer didn't call, which I requested. The officer called me the second day when I called again at the advice of Tom Westbrook. And the officer pulled in front of the house and said, I don't hear anything. I said, of course not, you don't hear anything. The dog doesn't have a schedule, you know? So he said, what do you want me to do? I said, I want you to please get out of your car, walk up to the door, knock on the door, and try to get the residents to come to the door and tell them there's a problem, which he did. And then he called me the second time after he was getting ready to leave the house. And he said, the people in the home, when they saw me at the front door, there was a young woman there that said, oh, I figured somebody'd call sooner or later, you know? So so far in the last few days since that's happened, it's almost nonexistent. The dog whines, but doesn't go into a bark, and somebody puts it back into the home. Then last weekend, too, across the street again, from someone that's been cited with administrative citation, there was a new officer to come out. She was really nice. She called me. She went to the front door and told the people that, well, the resident said, oh, I'll just turn it down. And she suggested that they cease and go into the house, which they did. I'm wondering, too, why, if somebody goes out to a home that's been cited before with an administrative citation for a nuisance of noise disturbance, why they aren't cited again a second time? Because from what I understand, they don't start all over at the first fine at $250. I understand it. It continuously goes up. But again, I want to thank everybody for helping me. And unless you're in a situation like this or know somebody that has a health issue like this, you don't understand totally. You can only assume that it's a problem, but it can make you very ill. And I just want to thank the people that helped me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person with hand raised, I believe the screen name is Lean She. I will unmute your mic. Your mic is now unmuted.
Yeah, hi, this is Lee Brandt. The name is Lee and she. I just wanted to say hello to everybody, and it's good to see everybody is relatively healthy. And everything's coming along. I mean, you know, we can all finally go get our haircut. I know you guys can't see me, but I know Mike would appreciate going to get a haircut. And same with Linda. Pat doesn't have to worry about it, and neither does Rick or Tom, for that matter. But I'm just glad to see everybody and just keep up the good work. That's it.
Thank you, Lee. Is there anyone else? I don't see anybody on the attendees. Do you have any emails or calls?
Yes, Mayor, Mr. John Warren sent an email over the weekend, and he asked that it be read into the record. He states, "Mr. Tom and city leaders, on my walk today, I again noticed trimmings and trash dumped at Moffitt and River Road. This is a T intersection, and part of it is county, I believe. The dumping is on Moffitt, just south of River Road, which is Series. Today, I spoke with the property owner at the southwest corner. It's not him. He does not have those type of trees. The folks who live on the southeast east corner do not have that type either. The folks who live in the north side of River Road in the county seem to have those type of trees. I suggest one of our cameras be positioned south of River Road Street, facing the north, might catch a view of who the violators are. Councilperson Dorosse lives very close to the dumping area. It appears that the violators know about the city's leaf and limb pickup program. It also might be some landscapers as well. He did not send it into the gov outreach site. Do landscapers and law care services who work in our city have to have a Series business license or other type of license to operate or work within the city? What if they live elsewhere and just have customers' homes that they tend?" John Warren and Series.
Yeah, Mayor Vieira, I'll just respond to the question that Mr. Warren raises. Anybody who does work within the city of Series, regardless whether their business address is here or not, has to have a Series business license.
Okay, so is it, I mean, it sounds like he's indicating it could be somebody that's living on the north side of River Road, so not in the city limit, and bringing leaf and limb over into the city and dropping it on the street. That's what it kind of sounds like. Under that scenario, could we put up a camera or could we ask someone to? If they've got any footage to see that, I mean, what's the requirement should something like that happen?
Yeah, generally, code enforcement would become involved in that. So Chief Collins and Captain Crane are both on the meeting this evening so they can work with their code enforcement officers on an approach that we may be able to catch the violator.
Okay. All right, if, yeah, if you could look into that and see what we can do to stop the proliferation of dumping in that area, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay, are there any other emailed or phone comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 13 consent calendar items? Or, well, the other two are discussion. Okay, hearing none, we will move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Item six and 12.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like an item pulled other than item six or 12? If so, raise your hand or call or email. Okay, I don't see any. So at this time, I'll bring it back direction for, excuse me, bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Approved or approved, 1, 2, 3, A, 4, 5, A, B, 7, A, B, C, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 13.
Second. Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Hi.
Councilmember Dorosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, item number six, resolution number 2020-38, accepting the active transportation plan grant and authorizing a budget amendment approving consultant services agreement with Placeworks, Inc. for citywide active transportation plan and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Vice Mayor Rhino?
When this was on our last agenda, I had a problem with the figures adding up. And I still, it still doesn't make sense to me. The staff report on the very first page says approving the consultant services agreement for $110,000. But then, when you look at the contract on page two and the last page, it shows the consultant is charging $104,000. So I don't understand what the difference is. And then if you add the budget amendment, it shows it for $110,000, and then another 27 for $131, but yet it looks like the contract amount is for $110,000. Mr. Padilla, can you explain that to me?
Sure. So the contract is for, it's a fixed fee of $104,000, and then there's an optional task, optional tasks for $6,000. And that's, that's also in their cost proposal. So this agreement with Placeworks is for $110,000. Like I mentioned, $6,000 is for optional tasks because they had an optional task to do an online survey.
Yes.
And we didn't, I did not want to commit to that specific task, so I left it open to give us a little bit of flexibility. So the agreement is for $110,000. The original grant that we obtained three years ago was for the $131,000 because that was an estimate of the cost of the, of the, of this contract, this active transportation plan. And it includes a little bit of time, you know, it could include a little bit of time for city staff as well to participate in this project.
Okay, so the $6,000 for the phone interviews?
$6,000 was an online survey, like using Survey Monkey or something of that sort to reach out as a part of their community outreach because it's where we have a little bit of a challenge reaching folks, especially in the disadvantaged areas. And that part of this contract is to reach out to them and to reach out to other people that normally wouldn't participate. So there was an optional task for an online survey.
Okay, so if we will get 100, we'll get 104 from the active transportation grant?
Correct. And that's capped. It's $104,000 is a maximum amount, but it's also 79.39% of the total cost of the project.
So we're going to get the 104?
We should get the 104 because it's going to also cover some staff costs and to manage, to manage the project as well, from my time, maybe even Tom's time, and other engineering staff to participate.
So the $27,000 that's shown in the budget amendment, it shows that it's coming out of a capital improvement account. But does that actually come from the general fund?
No, that would come from measure L. Our local match to the grant would come from measure L.
Okay, those are my only questions. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone on the council have any follow-up questions on this item? Okay, does anyone in the audience? Okay, I don't see any, so I'll bring it back to the council for direction on this item.
Move to adopt resolution number 2020-38.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Hi.
Councilmember Dorosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 12, resolution number 2020-51, approving a contract with the California Department of Correction and Rehabilitation for their use of the police range for a term of three years at a use rate of $1,500 per year. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Thank you. I did send an email to Chief Collins on about six or seven items, and he cleared them all up for me. The only one that I have an issue with is, bless you. In the contract, it says that we will provide telephone access out at the range. We don't do that currently, and I'm just afraid that even, even though in the past they've never asked for it, it is in the contract. So what happens if someone new comes along that says, hey, your contract says you will provide us a phone out there, and then we're going to be on the hook to run a line and do everything else? So I would ask that that be deleted from the contract because they all have cell phones and everything, and why should it be the city's responsibility to put a phone out there for them? That's my only concern.
So is that, okay, is that okay, Mr. Collins?
Well, there's, there's two ways we can do this. And being creative, there is telephone access with the permission of Jeremy. There is a water facility out there that has a landline that could be used in case of emergency. They do have cell phones. Or we would have to pull this contract right now, send it back up to the state with the rewording, and go through that whole process all over again.
Okay, but where is the, you believe that wherever the phone is, that that should meet the needs of the contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I would be good with that if Mr. Thomas is.
Yeah, we're fine with it.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone on the council have any questions on this item? How about anyone in the audience? Okay, I don't see anyone, so at this time, I'll look for council direction.
Move to adopt resolution number 2020-51.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Hi.
Councilmember Dorosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. So moving on to unfinished business, we have none. We have no public hearings and no new business, so we will move to the discussion items. Item number 14, fireworks discussion.
Right, so Captain Crane and Chief Wise are going to go through a PowerPoint. I'm going to share that. And gentlemen, just give me an idea when you want me to go to the next slide. That's not the right one. Try that again. All right, Chief Wise, Captain Crane, you're on.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Last year, as you know, was our inaugural program to combat illegal fireworks in the city of Series. So this will be our second year of trying to combat this issue, working together with the fire department, the police department, IT, and the city manager's office. Go to the next slide, please. So we're not going to give you the full presentation like we did last year. We have a condensed version, and we're just going to recap on some of the highlights of the program and what we have planned for this year. So again, as same as last year, we're going to have a zero tolerance, and we're going to send out a press release tomorrow through our social media contacts. And our task force will be, has been assigned to develop an effective outreach strategy and develop enforcement strategy to combat the use, possession, and sale of illegal fireworks. Next slide, please. So our message again to our citizens is that the city has a zero tolerance for the use, possession, or sale of dangerous illegal fireworks. Again, you like them, you will be cited, or we could arrest you. The fines and penalties are steep. Fines are $1,000 for each occurrence. A misdemeanor or felony charges could equal jail time. Next slide, please. We really tried to hit this home last year with our citizens is to really respect your neighbors, our veterans, and our pets. You know, loud, unexpected explosions from illegal fireworks can startle and cause stress for veterans and pets. I mean, you heard that from one of our citizens tonight that's dealing with some anxiety issues. And you can imagine what fireworks does to our citizens that has those type of issues. Again, so we have veterans residing within our city with PTSD. The sound of fireworks can trigger anxiety. Next slide, please. Again, every year around the Fourth of July, the city has an influx of lost and injured pets who panic at the sounds of exploding fireworks. Be courteous and celebrate safely this year. And real important, we added this this year, we saw this last year when we were driving around, is for our citizens to please clean up after they've used their, their legal fireworks. Next slide, please. Safe and sane fireworks can be purchased from permitted operators in the city from June 28th to July 6th. I'll just add a note to that this year. Our request for fireworks permits or fireworks booths, I've noticed it considerably slower than in years past. I have contacted some of the vendors, and they say that they will be coming, but I'm expecting we won't have quite as many booths as we normally have. So the Series Fire Department and the Series Police Department is, again, we're hosting our fireworks safe surrender event beginning on June 29th through July 3rd. And it'll be at our downtown station, Fire Station 15, also known as Station 1, at 2755 Third Street from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Next slide, please. The safe surrender event will provide residents a safe and convenient way to dispose of illegal fireworks while also avoiding the risk of facing thousands of dollars in fines and criminal charges. All fireworks will be accepted, no questions asked. Only fireworks will be accepted at this event. If you see a firefighter or a police officer, you can surrender illegal fireworks to them. For more information, you can call us here at Fire Station 1 or Fire Station 15 at 538-5701, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. If you see a firefighter or a police officer, you can surrender illegal fireworks to them. For more information, you can call us here at Fire Station One or Fire Station Fifteen at five three eight fifty seven oh one, Monday through Friday, eight to five. So our public outreach will be the same as last year. Uh you can see the yard signs and the posters, and we have we have several of those, and hopefully some of uh our citizens kept their signs from last year, but we have those here at at Station One, and we're more than happy to hand them out. And uh so from from now until July fourth, you will see the signs, banners, and posters around town displaying the message zero tolerance. And our message again is to be a good neighbor. Starting June eighth, we are passing out yard signs again to the residents who want to place them in their front yards, posters for businesses to display. And again, we're gonna be doing our public service announcement, our PSA, myself and Chief Collins. Uh we're in the video last year that will be also on our website and our and our social media. And Captain Crane's gonna take over from here.
Good evening, Council. Um how to report our illegal fireworks? We're gonna use the same processes we did last year. We got good uh feedback on that. So the city's June utility bills will have the insert describing uh what illegal fireworks are and how to report them to the city. Um the reason we're doing this again is in the years past, nine one system has been inundated with reports of people calling in for illegal fireworks, and in turn it ties up our dispatch resources and our law enforcement resources. Next slide. So we're again gonna be working with the Chamber of Commerce. We're hoping that we'll have everything up and running with the businesses by then, so we can get that really out to them. Uh we're also gonna reach out to American Legion, and we did last year also with them. Um we'll have it on our uh police and fires Facebook page, Instagram, and a Nixle along with the City of Series website. We'll have that PSA from last year also. Um we will be handing out the flyers or giving out to the fireworks booths to be handed out. Um describing the safe and same fireworks purchase within the city and instructions on how to report illegal fireworks. Now, once again, we still wanna stress, please do not call nine one one. We will have the uh phone number up and running, the two oh nine five three eight loud five six eight three. That'll begin July first. We'll start staffing that, and then we'll have the email. They can also do it at fireworks hotline at seriespolice.com. That will also be monitored as of July first. And when reporting fireworks to the police, please be patient. We're reporting them. Uh we do get a lot of the calls that come in, so we will have to prioritize those and move forward those. Um recognize that there is a big problem within the city, and we're undertaking this enforcement to try and see if we can't uh curb some of that. We do expect high volume calls for the weekend. We we're expecting the high volume calls for the weekend. It could go either way on us depending on when everything starts opening up and people start coming out. I anticipate that if things are opened up by July fourth, we're gonna be really busy with people coming out, answering to get out. So all the calls for the police and fire resources, they're gonna be prioritized, and we prioritize first through our records department, which will be answering the uh phone number and the email. Those will then be routed up to the dispatch center, who will then prioritize those and assign those as units are available. Uh we will be doing a zero tolerance again. We will have a special task force comprised of police officers and firefighters who will be enforcing the zero tolerance throughout the city. Extra officers will be on patrol July fourth. It will be working with members of the fire department to issue citations. Uh code violations including doing the following, so possessing, using, storing, selling, and or displaying dangerous or illegal fireworks. Seller offering to sell safe and sane fireworks without a permit issued by the city will also get a citation. Uh to handle handle the expected increase of calls to to report illegal fireworks, additional staff will be on duty. We're gonna be increasing our records personnel by one. Last year, we had one person, and it was a little difficult with all the calls coming in, emails to stay up on that. So we're gonna increase that by one with the ability to back that back down if it just doesn't get that busy. Um again, please don't call nine one to report illegal fireworks. Use our reporting tip line, five three eight loud, or the email at fireworks hotline at seriespolice.com. Uh last year, just to kinda summarize for you guys and bring it back to the forefront, July fourth, the police department received a hundred and fifty six calls for illegal fireworks. A hundred and forty one of those calls were received through the tip lines, either through the phone or the email, and it resulted in forty three citations. A hundred and forty one calls coming in there that didn't hit my dispatch center was tremendous to keeping our officers on the street and being able to prioritize our calls and get them out to where they needed to be. The task force officers are the ones that handled most of those citations right there. Now, some of the improvements that we did recognize, as I mentioned earlier, we did increase our staffing and our records clerk by one. That was to uh count for the emails and the phone lines that were coming in. And we will be increasing our staffing on the street as far as the task force people go, but we will wait until we get closer in the wake of COVID nineteen and how it opens up and how it anticipates it. And our staff on that may be a game day decision, just depending on on the type of feedback we're getting from July first moving on. And with that, Chief Wise and I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you. I just had one question. Um as far as citing, do we cite if we go by the next day and see that there's a bunch of trash and debris out in front of the residents? I mean, I know when I walk through the neighborhood, it 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 looks like a war zone that people have just ravaged and left on the side of the street.
We haven't in the past cited for the trash, which is what that's gonna be is the trash dump there. Uh we haven't done that. We've been focusing our attention on the illegal airborne and the exploding fireworks.
Okay, well, perhaps um we have a maybe a follow up the next day or the or two days after we go through the neighborhoods. I mean, it's pretty easy to see who it is that did it because it's right in front of the home, and I just I don't think it's the trash should be left for the rest of the citizens or or the city staff to have to pick up. I mean, at the very least, people should be able to pick up after themselves. I don't know if the rest of the council has noticed it, but it seems like a big problem as I walk through the neighborhoods.
Well, absolutely, we can. And last year's uh wrap up, that was your suggestion that you gave us is about also focusing on people picking up their their stuff. So we're gonna hit it this year with the uh social media talking about cleaning up after yourself. So we're hoping that that'll kinda catch on also.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from any of the council members on this? Councilmember Klein?
I just have two questions. Number one is uh the forty three citations last year, how many of those have been uncollected or unresolved?
From the police department's side, I do not have the exact number on those.
Ten of the of the forty three citations that were issued, ten have been paid in full, and um twelve are in had payment arrangements. We've collected a total of fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
So if that's ten and ten and twelve, that's twenty two. So what happened to the other nineteen or uh?
They were sent to collections.
Okay, and uh the next question is, uh if you come up to a residence that was cited last year, does their fine double this year?
No, we're gonna be treating that as a new offense. It's been a year past, so now we've got a whole new offense at that address, and we but we will be issuing a thousand dollar citation to begin.
So is it something we can look at in the future that that maybe if it's uh an individual gets cited two years in a row or so, that we can increase the fine to them? We can do this in the future?
I think a thousand dollar fine is pretty sufficient um punishment.
Yeah, but if you're getting the same individual a couple, you know, year after year. So that's just my thought.
Yeah, we we would hope that somebody that receives a thousand dollar citation would think about the fact if they were gonna light aerial fireworks again in the City of Series.
Well, maybe that's something this year that that once you see who all is cited, that you can go back and see if they were cited last year, and if they were, maybe that's a discussion that we could have in the future.
Sure.
Do we lean the property if they don't end up paying, or can we do that?
Um we if they are the property owner, we could. If they're renters, we cannot.
Okay. Okay, so I I I think the direction I'm hearing is that we'll monitor what happens this year, and if we find any repeat offenders, please let us know, and then we can address moving forward how we wanna do that for uh multiple violations over over each year. Is that correct, Councilmember Klein? Yes, I'm hearing it. I'm saying a head nod. Okay. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Is there was it the City of Manteca that was citing property owners as well as the people who were setting them on? Was it the City of Manteca? It seems like one of the cities near us, and I'm not sure how they're able to do that, but that definitely gets people's attention if the property owner is gonna be cited as well. Does anyone know if they did that or not? No?
Uh I don't know if that's what they were doing, but we were citing the property owners, whoever was in charge of the property when we went out for the fireworks.
Okay.
We didn't actually have to see who lent it. If we knew it came from this house and saw it go from there, then the owner of that house received the citation because they're allowing it, and that was part of the enforcement is also allowing.
So in actuality, then, um what Ms. Diaz said, if they weren't the property owner, but the property owner's being cited, so in fact, their property could be leaned? Correct?
Correct.
But we didn't do that.
We sent them all to collections. No, we didn't. We haven't leaned any properties.
But we can.
Yes.
We could go back and do that.
Correct.
Okay.
That's if they don't pay, correct?
Yes.
It's been a year.
Right.
Double the fine. I like your idea, Klein.
Well, it doesn't matter. You double the fine, you still lean it. So and so if they've done it multiple times now, they don't owe us a thousand, they owe us two thousand, and it's still a lien. When when and if they go to sell the property, they've gotta clear that, or it's.
Official lien is like a notice, and then we get a payoff request. That's correct.
Yeah.
So we'll get our money eventually.
Eventually.
Is there any way to get real elaborate here that we can tag on interest to it if somebody holds on to the house for thirty years?
Um I think what we usually just lean a certain dollar amount.
Okay, I sure would like to see a three or four percent annual increase compounded annually. Anyway, any other questions on this item or comments? Okay, at this time, um I know it's a uh discussion item, but I do wanna open it up for anybody in the audience that might like to to chime in on the subject. I see we've got a couple of people raise their hands. Um Mr. Yankley?
Yes, I'd like to uh probably address the fire chief on this. I I think I discussed this briefly the in the city council meeting last year when they were starting a new program for the fireworks, and that was uh if they were gonna get, I know he was gonna put stuff on social media and stuff, but if they were gonna uh last year, if they were gonna uh try to get connection with the local uh in, I think it's Modesto Cave Line or some uh try to get a public service announcement to go over the airways. And the other question is, why is the city allowing them to sell fireworks to clear up to the sixth of July? I mean, that just puts more problems on law enforcement. It should stop at the Fourth of July that evening when sales are ceased. And on the humor side, we're all looking at Mr. Di Martini. I wanna know if I can get Trump's autograph. I'm finished.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't understand. I heard my name there, but I I didn't hear what he said.
Want me to repeat it?
Well, if you want me to hear it, you're gonna have to.
Okay, let me raise the hand there. Well, I asked the questions to the fire chief and and about the uh service announcement to the radio station and why the the uh fireworks are going, the sales are going clear up to the July sixth uh date, but I noticed and everybody here probably on a humor side, we might as well make some of these meetings humors. I wanna know if I can get an autograph picture or paper from your friend back there, Trump. Is that a dummy?
It's a cardboard cutout.
Oh, it looks pretty real.
Fair got canceled.
I thought maybe you and him were moving to Nevada or something.
Well, I'm going, but I think he's he lives in Florida.
All right, thank you. You can answer those. If if the chief can answer those two questions, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, the one question I would have is can can we, why do we go to to July sixth?
Yeah, I would have to double check, but I think that's in the fire code. I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I would have to double check on that and then provide an answer.
Well, I think if there's some flexibility, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think I'd like to cut it off on July fourth, but I'll hear from Councilor Dorosse that he probably has a good reason why.
Selling fireworks is like nineteen ninety five. Uh nobody sells fireworks. There's one booth over there on Whitmore Avenue that actually would sell them like on the fifth in the morning. Nobody sells them. Everybody wants to get the fireworks back to the place, and I believe it is a a a it's like an ordinance, a rule that they have with the fires, and it was the fifth, it wasn't the sixth. So unless they added a date to it, it was always you could be open only on July fifth, but nobody stays open.
Okay.
And the public service announcement question, I I briefly remember the conversation, but I I don't recall uh who he was suggesting that we send that through.
Mr. Yankley?
Yeah, a a local radio station, I think it, I don't know what the call letters are, but it's pretty popular called Cave Line or something. Maybe there's a country in western station around uh from what I understand, they have to give a certain time to the public for public service announcements. I think that'd be a great one, you know, I mean, could, you know, I know what you would say, but you know, some people do still listen to the radio, but the more media we can get out there, you know, besides the what we're looking at today with social media, some people are still listening to the airwaves. And what was the other uh uh Chief Wise that uh I think Mayor Vera asked you a question about why the sixth, you said you had to check something?
I didn't know if it was in the California fire code, if that's the allowable time that they allow overall. The cities can regulate that however they want from that point, but I don't know if the city used that as what they used when they adopted the resolution a few years ago.
So so you've been at a city another city before. What was the the circumstances there for Fourth of July?
It was the same, but but as I recall, I I don't remember seeing too many booths open the day after Fourth of July. I have seen them, but not too many.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brandt?
Mr. Brandt, your mic is mic is unmuted.
No, it looks like Jeans is. There we go.
Okay, Chief Wise?
Yes.
I was wondering when you're giving out the permits, are you talking to them about the uh social distancing on account of the, you know, the Pavona nineteen?
Yeah, that's gonna be interesting how how they will do that. They'll have to follow, you know, everything that the county health director is putting out and UCDC guidelines. Usually every year we do a a safety briefing here at the community center. We put it on, we bring everybody in. This year, we're gonna be doing that online, and we're actually doing all our permits this year. We're not having anybody come in. Uh we put it online, so they'll go online, and they're they'll pay online, and their receipt will be their permit. That's a great suggestion, and and we could possibly, once we go out and do our That's a great suggestion and and we could possibly, once we go out and do our inspections, we're going to inspect every booth. We could remind them of some of the COVID nineteen related of social distancing and that kind of thing and sanitation.
Okay, yeah, we were just curious. Actually, my wife was, she made me do it, so.
Okay, and it looks like we have, I don't know if that's Dave.
Dave Pratt, let me unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, you know, by the by the fourth, I know our booth, we're pretty wore out out and glad it's all over with, but and I don't know where that to the sixth comes from. But the, you know, another thing about this coronavirus, same, the booths aren't are not that big. And and there's, you know, it's hard to be to distance each other because we're constantly working back and forth, forth in that booth. As far as the customers, they probably you can do that, but inside the booth, it's very hard.
Okay, well, I anticipate that either the state or the county will come up with some guidelines that the that the booths will have to use. At least that's what we're seeing right now occurring. So if the state doesn't, I'm sure the same type of procedures for the lines of of the crowds and the people working, some information or guidance will be provided. So it it just, there's a lot of things right now that are taking, you know, priority over that. I know I heard today there was some discussion about some of the youth sports and trying to get the governor's office to address that ASAP because now is the time when all those activities are taking place. So I anticipate that the the fireworks stand criteria will be coming, but but we don't have anything right now.
All right, thank you. You all have a good evening.
Okay. All right, with that, unless there are any other questions, we will move on to the COVID nineteen discussion. Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, just a quick update, counsel. As you may know, the county of Stanislas got approved their variants on May twentieth and moved kind of deeper into phase or stage two rather, allowing some dine in restaurants and some retail opportunities. And then just over the last couple of days, guidance was issued by Gavin Newsom, our governor, which allows hair salon and barber shops in addition to places of worship. So we're slowly moving kind of through the second stage and hopefully moving closer into the third stage. Also, I heard today on the governor's news conferences that he is trying to get guidance for camps and summer camps also out soon. So that's where we're at in terms of the the city halls reopening. Public Works Director has ordered some protective measures which are in transit. They were ordered a few weeks ago, actually. Once we get those in place, we'll be opening the portions of city hall that we can. We're still encouraging our folks to make appointments or call us if they can do so, but we will be opening our facilities. I don't have a date just yet because it's all going to depend upon when those public measures get into place, which I don't think they're even going to be delivered here until next week. So we are looking to move in the direction of reopening city hall, but it just don't have a date just yet. And that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Tom? Okay, with that, we will move to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will move to reports. I have nothing to report. Councilmember Klein?
I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes, you may remember at the last meeting, I said I was going to be downtown pulling weeds. And I invited people and I just wanted to to thank Mr. Westbrook for showing up, Lee Brand and Mrs. Yankley. And it was a very small group, but we were pretty mighty. We got a lot accomplished last Saturday along with my husband. And then Tuesday and Wednesday night, Sam and I went back out because we're both crazy and there were still weeds left. And we wanted to get that taken care of. And then we went out two nights ago because we'd forgotten about the city parking lot and that was driving us crazy. So we took care of that and we, then after we pulled some more weeds, we walked through downtown and we did the trash pickup with my little old lady, you know, those clipping things that you do. So anyway, I just wanted to thank the folks that came out and helped. But I do have a question for Mr. Padilla on that note. The landscaping at East Gate Park where there's just going to be bark. Mr. Padilla, are you there?
Yes.
Where where there's just going to be bark in the landscape area, will there be weed barrier going down first?
Yes, we, I mean, we we can add that. I don't recall the details. We're contemplating either doing decomposed granite or the bark, but we can include the the fiber, the plastic so that weeds don't come up through there and we'll work with Parks Division and and Public Works. So we will, we have some flexibility to adjust things.
Well, we we should do that because even if we're not planting anything in the landscape area, if you don't have the barrier down, you're going to have it just full of weeds anyway. And I I can't go over and do that park. I'm kind of, you know, my my business has gone out of business now, so.
Yeah, we we will address it and and make it as hard as we can for the weeds to, you know, sprout at the park.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Drossit?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilmember Condon?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, one more thing that I did want to bring up, Tom, and I don't know if you had any requests or not, but I know I've heard in other jurisdictions for the local restaurants, they're being asked if they can utilize some space outside to increase their number of patrons that go there. And so if if that request does come up, could you could you either address it or bring it back to the council? I know we want to definitely do everything that we can can to help our local restaurants survive and 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 deal with patrons. So I know, for instance, in San Luis Obispo, they're going to be closing the main Higera Street in about a week so that all those restaurants can utilize the the asphalt to serve. And I know Turlock was looking at doing the same, so I don't want to miss out on that opportunity if if our businesses need that help.
Yeah, if that's a, if that's something that comes to light, I think that's something that we can address pretty easily. I know with the downtown specific plan and the improvements to Fourth Street, kind of those little refuge islands kind of down there, I think that that was the intent is if somebody wanted to close a space or two off, that that's something that could happen. So we'll entertain any of those ideas that are presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now staff comments. Ms. Diaz?
Nothing, Mayor.
Tom?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Mr. Westbrook?
Just a reminder for the council and all those participating this evening, tomorrow night at five o'clock is your budget workshop. For the council members and staff, you'll actually physically be in the city council chambers. We're going to distance you. For those folks that want to participate, the Zoom announcement has been out. For all those council members, please bring your paper binders that were provided to you. But also please bring your computers because we need to make sure that that we can get you set up through Zoom. I'll be sharing information, PowerPoint, et cetera, for those participating over the Zoom. But we need to make sure that you bring your hard binders and your computers to the meeting tomorrow at five o'clock.
That it? Okay, thank you. Mr. Padilla?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Crane?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Wise?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the council know that our first fire engine has finally arrived. It arrived last week. And as of this morning, the the three remaining engines are on the road right now and they're headed for California. So they should be here Friday.
Great. Okay, Mr. Slater?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dumas?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Lor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Ball?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Di Martini?
Yes, Mayor, I do have just a quick update on the the virus numbers. Coronavirus, Saturday we had eight new cases, Sunday seventeen and Monday thirteen. I don't know what the numbers would be today, but it is kind of leveling off and there hasn't been any deaths in almost a week now. I think we had two last week. So that's why we got the exemption from the state to open up some of the the restaurants and some of the retail. Also, the, you know, the states and the whole countries assumptions were completely off base. This never amounted to anything near what they said it was going to be. And the hospitals were never overwhelmed and it just outside of a few specific places like nursing homes, there really hasn't been too much of a problem throughout the county. So the hair salons and churches that are being allowed to open up are really in stage three. They're not stage two. So we're gradually seeing everything return to normal, at least slowly anyway. In numbers, we had six hundred and fifty nine cases countywide that were positive tests. And five hundred and twenty one of those have fully recovered. And from the very beginning, there was a hundred and twelve people that were hospitalized. Now, that's a very low number for a county this size with five hundred and fifty thousand people. So that's where we're at right now. Also, I could mention that the county is looking to open up some cooling centers. Where we're going to put them is kind of up in the area, but I know that the staff was working on that today because the temperature is warming up. And our libraries are closed where we usually have them. So some decision will be made on that tomorrow where people can go. I just, I don't have an answer for that today, though. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mayor, I'd like to touch base on that real quick.
Sure.
The cooling zone, our community center is open for a cooling zone from ten to six, Monday through Friday.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, with that, we will adjourn to, as Tom mentioned, we do have a special budget meeting tomorrow. And then after that, we will be meeting on a regular scheduled meeting, which will be June eighth on at six P M. And that meeting will also be in person, correct? If I'm wrong, Tom, and but we will also be providing Zoom access as well.
Yeah, Mayor, that's something we're going to look into. Community Center, stage three is really reopening, but if we can hold the meeting physically in the community center, we're going to do that. But we want to make the option available for Zoom for those that prefer to attend from home.
Okay, Councilmember Drossit?
No, I just.
Oh, you were raising your hand, sorry.
Then logged in, I'm like.
Okay, all right, with that, we will adjourn and thank everyone for attending this evening.
Yes, tomorrow.